Right. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to this regular called schedule of the Temple City, regular called meeting of the Temple City Council. It's currently five minutes after five. Please rise as Keith Pizzuto. This is Mr. Pizzuto here. Good. As he leads us in invocation, followed by the pledge led by City Secretary Dan Louella.
Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of a holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the city of Temple. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Let's point me the pledge. Let's read it.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where religion stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you both. Now's the time for public comments. Any citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may do so. We have none. Okay? Is there anyone here to speak on item ten on the agenda? Everybody's wondering what item ten is. Item ten is the the annexation request. Anybody here for that? Okay, very good. Uh, moving on, we will have a public appearance by Mr. Guillory Mendoza to discuss, have a discussion regarding crime and cleanup of vacant lots. Is Mr. Mendoza here? No Mendoza? Todd Scott? Todd Scott? We're moving right through the agenda tonight. We're good at this. Okay, next, the next item is a special recognition. And it's to recognize September as National Library Card Sign Up Month. Did anybody even know there was such a thing? Is Natalie here? Yep. Oh. You want me to read your proclamation first? Okay. Proclamation reads, "From the Office of the Mayor of Temple, whereas since its inception in nineteen eighty-seven, Library Card Sign Up Month has been celebrated each September, marking the beginning of the school year with a focus on fostering academic achievement and lifelong learning. And whereas the American Library Association and libraries across the nation remind parents, caregivers, and students that signing up for a library card is a crucial first step toward educational success and personal growth. And whereas libraries provide invaluable access to a diverse array of resources, including books, multimedia, technology, and educational programs, creating pathways for discovery and innovation. Whereas a library card equips students with the essential tools to excel in their studies, adults with the resources to make informed decisions and explore their passions, and the public at large with research materials, information, and government services that enhance productivity and fulfillment. Whereas libraries provide a welcoming and inclusive environment for people of all backgrounds and ages to learn, connect, and engage with one another. And whereas more than nineteen thousand area residents proudly hold a library card, signifying the community's commitment to knowledge and learning. Now therefore I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-four as National Library Card Sign Up Month in the City of Temple, and I encourage all residents to support the public library by signing up for their own library card and to celebrate the transformative power of libraries. In testimony whereof, I witnessed my hand on the sill of the City of Temple, Texas on this fifteenth day of August twenty twenty-four."
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I'm honored to be up here. Unfortunately, our esteemed director is here but not feeling well today, so I'm just standing in for just a minute, and I just have brief comments. Really appreciate this proclamation. We have had a great summer. Our summer reading program is always one of the busiest times, and staff's been very busy working with all the families who come in and work with us to have enrichment over the summer. We actually had double the number of library card signups in June and July that we had this time last year, so I'm really excited about September. Uh, but I'm very grateful to the staff. If you want to stand up, we brought some staff members with us tonight for all the work they do to make the library really welcoming and warm place, a place for not only knowledge, soaking up knowledge and getting information and resources, but really connecting with people through programs and through different workshops and things that we do. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you. Um, I'll just end with, if you don't have a library card already, or if you need to renew yours, September is a great time to do that. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for all your great work over there. Natalie, I'm sorry you feel bad. Yes, do good work, and I know your dedication. So thank you all, staff, very much. Yep, okay. Okay, next is item six. Hmm? No, just give it. Yep. Um, item six is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Temple, Texas Limited Tax Notes, Series Twenty Twenty Four, authorizing the levy of an ad valorem tax in support of those notes, approving an official statement and a paying agent registrar agreement, awarding the sale of the notes, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of those notes. Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, as you read before you tonight, um, consider awarding the sale of some limited tax notes. It's Series Twenty Twenty Four. The ward of the sale would the would be authorized or release the project funds of three point two million dollars. Uh, the reason for this is seven, uh, purchasing sanitation and heavy equipment. Um, the payback source are rates that are already in place to support the debt service. And from sanitation revenues for the garbage trucks. The average annual debt service is estimated at five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the funds from the sale of these notes would be delivered on September fifth. Uh, this is just a detailed list. Uh, garbage, residential garbage trucks are right real close to half a million dollars now. Um, four hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred nine of these eleven pieces of equipment. You've already authorized the purchase of those, uh, equipments or heavy equipment refuge trucks. Total three point two million. Tonight, uh, with us is our financial advisor with Specialized Public Finance, Inc. And then our bond counsel is en route. But Dan is here to, uh, recommend the lowest bidder of these bonds that were received this morning, and he'll go over the details of that. Thank you, Dan.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Dan Wake Miller with Specialized Public Finance. As part of this process, your double A rating from San Antonio Porres was reviewed. Once again, they look at financial performance of the city, management of the city, the economy, and then debt levels of the city. And to maintain the double A, which you have, uh, notes that you're strong in all those categories of management and fiscal responsibility. Uh, I think the bids also reflect that. We received these this morning. Uh, as you can see, we received eight bids, which is again a strong number of bids. There has been some volatility in the marketplace, as I think you can see in the bids. Uh, the low bid from Hilltop Securities was two point nine nine seven two three seven percent, but they ranged as high as three point two eight four eight five five percent. So uh, obviously Hilltop, uh, had some strong interest and reflected it in the bid. Uh, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions on what was presented, um, on the rating or on the bids.
Counsel, anything for Mr. Wake Miller? Ms. Bernard, what is the, um, I see the the debt service is five hundred forty thousand dollars a year on three point two million. So the the, um, these bonds will be paid off how quickly?
Uh, seven-year bonds.
In the trucks?
Seven-year notes. Let me just.
Okay, and the, um, the assets that are being purchased have a life of?
Greater than seven years.
Yep.
The sanitation trucks usually are on frontline for around six years and then back up for two to three. But our goal is that the, um, life, life of the debt doesn't exceed the life of the asset.
Right. If you do that too many times, that will get you in some serious financial trouble. Yep, and would would you mind flipping back to the cost of the assets? Um, I have a memory of that that's half a million dollars for a trash truck just a few years ago. That was about three hundred and thirty. So fifty percent increase in the cost of the trash trucks. And we have how many? Twenty?
Thirty. We used to have twenty-eight. I think we have total in our fleet maybe thirty, thirty-two.
Yeah. So, you know, we talk about inflation, and we talk about what ultimately is, as we talk further through this meeting, you know, the the cost of, um, uh, what it takes to run a city. And I think this is a great example, but just five years ago, those trucks were two-thirds of that cost. And, um, and, you know, inflation hits us all, and it, uh, so as always, you know, special thanks to the taxpayers that are willing to, um, to continue to, uh, you know, to fund these types of of assets along with, um, you know, regular budget items, because it's it's expensive. It's expensive. I always like to point, I'm sorry I'm on my soapbox. But it is, I think everyone needs to understand what it takes to run a city, and this is one small piece.
Dollars a truck.
Were they the exact same trucks in essence?
At, you know, there's some more, um, mission requirements which sometimes make it more complicated, actually, but.
But they still do the same function.
Load size were the same.
You know, yeah, for that, yes. I mean, I think we've we've made some adjustments over the years, but yeah, that that's not what's contributing to the cost escalation.
But these trucks make stops, whether it's a recycled truck or a, um, regular garbage truck, they make stops at every house twice a week. So, again, I'll get off my soapbox. Any, um, anybody have anything for Mr. Wake Miller? Before we open the public hearing? One, okay? Okay, um, like I said, this item's subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, uh, may do so. Step to the podium, state your name, or raise your hand on the platform.
Forgive me, I'm moving a little slow tonight. Alan Lidle, Temple, Texas. I just wanted to say thank you for getting these things out quickly so that we can get the trucks we need to keep our fleet running and efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. How long have these trucks been on order?
I can take exactly.
Twenty-one? Couple of years.
Two years. Well, I know these trucks that you're authorizing with the limited tax notes tonight, they are twenty twenty-four.
Order.
Order. And I think it takes nine months to over a year to to receive one, but we ordered the these trucks of, Justin's telling me two months ago.
Yes, um, so trucks, actually, we've ordered two thousand twenty-two. We're still waiting to to get those trucks on, so it's taken eighteen to twenty-four months to get them.
It usually used to take nine months. That's takes twice as long. And I will note too, as as you're authorizing the issue of the tax notes tonight or awarding the sale, we do, um, when we come to you and asking for the authorization for a purchase, we do what's called an intent to reimburse and meets the requirements. Um, so once we receive the proceeds of the notes, we, it's covered the tax exempt status, et cetera, that we're, we did, y'all did authorize the intent to reimburse too with those proceeds when you do the the purchase order or the item to, um, authorize the purchase.
Very good. Thank you.
And we've also started to adjust our budgeting practices now that, you know, the the lead times have increased and have, um, you know, doesn't, there there's no end in sight to to seeing that that's coming back down to under a year as we had been previously used to. So we've adjusted, um, so in, you know, in the business plan, you'll see a truck recommended to be purchased well in advance of when we anticipate needing the new route to come online, and the staff associated with that route is budgeted in a different year than the truck. So now, you know, there's still a period of time where we're, you know, we're still making up for those, um, rapidly increased, uh, lead times that we experienced after the pandemic, but going forward, we hope to not, you know, not be, um, as much in that situation, even though the lead times will remain long as far as we can tell. We're ordering them earlier, um, than we historically did for when we project the route to need to be, um, in place. So for example, the 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 staff that you will be asked to consider adding next week in the budget for the routes, the trucks have been order for, on order for some time for those trucks to arrive in conjunction with the staff. Um, so that you actually will be able to add the route and not just on paper have it approved, but actually have the truck and the driver available.
Anybody else from the audience? Anyone on the platform? Okay. Then, um, counsel, I will, uh, close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item six.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second, uh, Councilmember Long. Council, please cast your vote. Item six passes five to zero. Moving on to item seven, I'll actually read item seven and eight in together. Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing to consult, to to consider adopting an ordinance, approving the tax role and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city, uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is tax year twenty twenty-four. And item eight is to, uh, is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance, setting a tax rate of sixty-two point six five cents per hundred dollar valuation, comprised of twenty-nine point seven six for maintenance and operations and thirty-two point eight nine cents for uh, debt service for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is tax year twenty twenty-four, and making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city. Ms. Bernard?
Just as a reminder, on August first, um, we had received the certified tax rule, but we hadn't received our calculations. And we did recommend and you proposed the tax rate of point six two six seven. But since then, we have, um, received our truth and taxation calculations, and we're recommending the point six two six five for the tax rate. Uh, the process and times timelines for required meeting dates, publications, and notices, motion language is governed by the state law through truth and taxation and the city charter. And as I mentioned, the proposed rate is point six two six five. Looking at last year's rate, which was point six one three zero. Our no new revenue tax rate is point five eight eight nine. The notice and hearing rate calculated out to be the point five eight eight nine. And then the voter approval tax rate that you couldn't go over this rate without going to the voters is the point six two six five. Looking how that rate compares, um, to the previous year, it's a, the total rate increase is one point three five cents. There is a decrease in the debt or the interest in sinking fund rate, which pays for your capital improvement programs of one point seven one cents. And then the increase in the M and O, which pays for general government, public safety, parks, libraries, et cetera, is an increase of three point oh six cents. And again, as it mentioned, it's important that you have the the tax rate is adopted in two components. Um, the general M and O and the INS rate. Also, the property tax role, um, the total amount, uh, without the reinvestment zone is ten point seven billion dollars. Uh, the reinvestment zone or tax increment district, uh, total role is one point three five eight eight oh eight four hundred and seventy billion for the total taxable value of the ten point seven billion. Uh, this increase without the reinvestment zone is a seven point eight six percent growth in your tax base, and the reinvestment zones tax base grew by just slightly under twenty-eight percent for the two combined of a little over ten percent. Uh, again, looking at the, um, applying the tax rate to the tax levy and comparing it to the previous year, the total tax rate's increasing by the one point three five cents, total tax revenue increasing four point eight million, and the estimated tax revenue for the reinvestment zone based on the levy would be one point, an increase of one point eight million dollars. At your, um, as, uh, noted, the adoption of the budget is scheduled for August twenty-second. Another public hearing on the tax rate, uh, final reading approving the tax role and levying the taxes, and the final reading adopting the tax rate. Uh, that concludes some information or presentation related to the tax role and tax rate, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Ms. Bernard? All right. Um, so I'll now open the public hearing on both items seven and eight. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so, or please raise your hand on the platform.
Alan Lidle, Temple. Let me start off by saying that the staff of Temple have done a fantastic job on the budget. It looked great at the last meeting that I was at workshop. Uh, they they just put in a humongous amount of work. And I just can't believe how how well they prepared it. But I do have one question from that last meeting. Uh, if I understood the chart that came up, one of the charts that came up, there was a entry of sixty-two point four nine cents per hundred that would be, that would generate the amount of money in the budget, needed in the budget. Did I misunderstand? So the sixty-two point six five is going to generate more than was was expected for the budget?
The point six two six five is estimated, or not estimated. Those those numbers that we presented last week were estimates based on not having the actual calculation.
Okay.
But the point six two six five generates an additional seventy-two thousand dollars of revenue.
Then, then.
So it would, it's just slightly less rate that would would be revenue neutral.
So what it would be, the revenue neutral rate, the sixty?
It would be less than, it would be less than point six two six five. Uh, I I can calculate it. I don't have the number calc- calculated at the moment.
Like I said, they did such a great job and working out everything in the budget. I thought we ought to kind of just only bring in what we need for the budget, not extras. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Um, there being no one else that needs to speak, I will, uh, close the public hearing on items seven and eight. And counsel, I will entertain a motion. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
There's no special language for seven, is there?
No.
I move to approve item seven as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Council, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. Moving on, uh, to item eight, counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number eight, and you do have special, uh, motion language at your desk for that.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six two six five, which is effectively a six point three eight percent increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item eight passes five votes to zero. Next item is consent agenda. All items that are listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. Um, if discussion is desired by the council, though, uh, any item may be removed from that consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. We are actually going to pull a few items tonight. So, uh, tonight, we're going to pull, uh, E, L, Q, and R for various reasons. So counsel, um, is there anything else except those four that need to be pulled? All right, then counsel, I will entertain a motion on item nine A through nine T, less item E, L, Q, and R.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, um, um, sorry. Nine through A through T minus L, Q, and R. And E, E, L, Q, and R.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long, a second by Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. The consent agenda, uh, nine A through nine T minus E, L, Q, and R, uh, passes five votes to zero. Moving on to, um, item E. Item E is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the purchase of an annual software subscription and maintenance from Central Square Technologies of Lake Mary, Florida in the amount of one hundred ten thousand three hundred twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, staff has asked that that item be, uh, postponed until September fifth. So I'll entertain a motion on the postponement of item nine E until September fifth.
Postpone item nine E until September fifth.
I can't that motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington, a second by Councilmember Long. Counsel, please cast your vote. Nine E passes five votes to zero. Item L is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing change order number three to the construction contract of R.T. Schneider Construction Company Limited of Temple for changes related to the construction of South P Ridge Road improvements in the amount of forty-nine thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. And counsel, if there's no discussion around that item, I'll entertain a motion on nine L.
To approve nine, item nine L?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Walker, a second by Councilmember Long. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item nine L passes four votes yes, zero votes no, and one abstention. Item nine Q is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the Temple Revitalization Corporation to purchase point five five, to purchase a point five five one acre property located in historic neighborhood district. Uh, addressed as thirteen twelve North Third Street and authorizing closing costs associated with the purchase in an estimated amount of two hundred eighteen thousand dollars. Can I read R N? Okay, just, okay. And then, um, item R is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the Temple Revitalization Corporation to sell a point five five one acre property, addressed as one three one two North Third Street, located in historic neighborhood district at Daybreak, uh, Two Daybreak Construction, Inc., and authorizing closing costs associated with that purchase in an estimated amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. And counsel, if there's no discussion around, uh, item Q, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. To, uh, to, I'll entertain a motion to table indefinitely, item nine Q.
I move to table indefinitely, item nine Q.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington, a second by Councilmember Long. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item Q, uh, nine Q to table indefinitely passes five votes to zero. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion to table indefinitely, item nine R.
Table of nine R indefinitely.
Second.
Have a motion by, um, Councilmember Long. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, cast your vote, please. Item nine R passes five votes to zero. Moving on to the regular agenda is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the voluntary annexation of sixteen point seven seven six plus or minus acres of land situated in the Henry Millard Survey abstract number five five two in the City of Temple's extra territory. in the city of Temple's extraterritorial jurisdiction generally located north of Cedar Creek Road and addressed as four one seven zero Cedar Creek Road and six zero 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 Old Howard Road. This is the item that was up for annexation, but then staff has requested that that item be postponed until we can realign a couple of things. So Ms. Atkinson, I see you standing up there. We don't need a presentation. Okay, I didn't, I didn't, wasn't sure what you were expecting. Okay. Yeah, very good. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this, Adam may do so. No, I'm sorry, we decided not to do that because of public comments, because we're postponed. I'm sorry. I have notes all over the place. All right, very good. Then council, I'll entertain a motion then to postpone item nine, I'm sorry, item ten indefinitely at staff's request.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to postpone item ten indefinitely due to staff request.
Second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item ten is postponed indefinitely by a vote of five votes to zero. Item eleven is a second and final reading to consider adopting an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow recreational vehicle park on approximately thirty point nine acres of a seventy four point three plus or minus acre tract located in the Maximo Marino Survey Abstract Number fourteen in the city of Temple, Texas, addressed as sixteen eight oh one and sixteen eight oh three Northeast H K Dodge and Loop. And council will be, I'll entertain a motion on postponing item eleven until either the September fifth or the September nineteenth meeting.
I'll make that motion to postpone to September fifth or September nineteenth.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Council, please cast your vote. Motion to postpone to September fifth or nineteenth passes five votes to zero. Next is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from general retail and manufactured home district to a planned development ag with a site development plan and a conditional use permit for a HUD code manufactured home land lease community, which would be the expansion of Bluebonnet Estates Mobile Home Park on twenty two point one zero nine plus or minus acres near the southwest corner of East Young Avenue and East Shell Avenue located in the Benjamin Stresner Survey Abstract Number seven four six in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as nine oh one East Avenue A.
Young Avenue.
Yes, I'm sorry, nine oh one East Young Avenue, Ms. Atkinson.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're here for our first reading, and then we will bring this back to you all on the September fifth meeting. A quick recap and locate us where we're at in town here. So like you mentioned earlier, we're off Young and Shell Avenue. And you can see here the, on the aerial, the existing portion of this mobile home community. And then the hatched area is the area that we are looking for that expansion to go into. So this is a request for an expansion of the Bluebonnet Mobile Home Park. Currently, we do not allow for mobile home parks or land lease communities to operate within general retail or mobile home district. We don't even have that in our zoning anymore, so it makes sense to clean that up now. So the existing park is grandfathered in this zoning, but it cannot be expanded. So they are just going to leave that as is and focus on this other undeveloped property. So this would be allowed with a conditional use permit in an agricultural district in ag. And so we're proposing a PD to go along with this for some specific conditions and a site plan review. So here you can see some of the photos just in general from the area around the site. And then here's looking specifically at properties that are near the mobile home park and near this proposed expansion. So here's to the north side of Young Avenue on the photos to the far left. In the center, you can see the property to the east of Shell, and then also those last two photos there are adjacent on the east and to the south. Here's some photos of the community, so you can see how the current entrance is, some of the fencing that they have, some examples of some of the units on site. Also, some onsite amenities that are already existing. There's an office, a meeting room, a playground, picnic tables, barbecue pits, a pool, and plenty of open space. So some background on this property, currently there are one hundred and seventy seven existing sites, and this request is to add an additional one hundred and twenty three, which will bring us to a total of three hundred for the entire community. Our mobile home parks and land lease communities, they must comply with our U D C Section five point three point two for those standards on the HUD code manufactured homes, and then also with our Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty three, which is our manufactured housing and land lease communities. So in the U D C, we call out certain things such as setbacks and other conditions, so it does call for a fifty foot front yard setback. And that's just along those perimeter streets, which is also consistent with agricultural setbacks. The P D condition is to allow for a reduction in that setback from that fifty feet down to thirty, which would make this expansion area consistent with the existing homes there to on the west side. Also, our code only allows double wide units. So our P D condition that you will see tonight also includes an allowance for just twenty five percent of the units to be double wide, and the rest may be single wide units. It also calls for fencing and screening around the perimeter, landscaping requirements, and then also a fifteen year maximum age limit on any units that are moved into the community. Did I miss one here? Nope. Oh, yes, I did. There we go. Okay, so also it looks at density, max density for the area, so that's at ten units per acre. The applicant is only proposing five point seven units per acre. Then it talks about minimum lot sizes, so we have the minimum fifty feet width is going to be provided for the single wide and sixty for double wide, and then also the minimum five percent recreational area. So currently, they do have two point seven three nine acres provided spread out among three areas within their property, so that already meets that minimum two point four that would be required. Also, they're required to have two parking spaces per unit plus one space per four units for guest parking. That would require thirty one spaces on that guest parking. They're going to provide eighty three. Two access points are required for the three hundred units, and so they're going to have the two alternate design entrances, and those will be there to accommodate all three hundred units. And you can see those labeled there with the A D E one and A D E number two. And this property will be served by city water and sewer. So again, the access, we have Young as a community collector and Shell as a minor arterial. We do have a C I P project to widen Young to two lanes with a center turn lane, but that's funded at a later year, or it's, the design has been funded, but the project has not moved forward yet. Also, there's those alternate design entrances, so that's going to be that forty one feet of pavement width, and also the internal streets will have the minimum twenty six foot of pavement width with no parking on either side, so they'll be marked fire lanes. And then sidewalks are required along both street frontages. Again, the utilities served by city water and sewer, we have the twelve inch main on Young. And then they're going to require a second connection, and that's the eight inch line on Shell, and then sewer is a fifteen, is that correct? Do we even have fifteen inch? That's right, okay. Fifteen inch gravity main on the west side, and then they have a private line also. And then they will need to extend some private lines to serve the rest of this property. We did provide you all with some trip generation estimates, and if you just quickly look at the numbers, you can see that this actually has less less trip generations than single family homes and about on point with other types of housing such as apartments and townhomes. Looking at our comp plan, so this is residential and neighborhood services category, which is intended for new single family detached residential housing. Alternative housing options such as mobile homes are really not even addressed in our future development plan. So staff has reviewed this, and they're really proposing this because it provides opportunities for a detached, single family use and homeownership, but it's just a non-traditional setting of what you think in a single family neighborhood. It's also consistent with the intent of the future development plan. So our compliance summary shows that it's in compliance with the future development plan, compatible with all the surrounding uses and surrounding zonings. Public facilities are available, and it's compliant with our thoroughfare plan. Notification was posted in the paper on July twenty fifth. Also, notices were mailed out to property owners, and we did have one response. For, it covered three properties. You can see kind of that little triangle piece where the road splits. The the notification did cover all three properties, just one notification, though. And then this was reviewed at D R C on June seventeenth. So staff and P N Z at the eight five meeting voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this rezoning. Again, it's a planned development ag, site development plan, and a C U P for the HUD code manufactured home land lease community, which is subject to the conditions. And I won't read all of these because we really covered them in the presentation. Just highlighting, you know, they they are meeting all of the minimum requirements, and they are also, you know, continuing the amenities and everything that they had in the previous site, the addition of the sidewalks. And we will require a subdivision flat, though, to follow this rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well if you have questions for them.
Would you go back one?
Sure.
Okay, I was looking at item eleven, sidewalks, the requirement for sidewalks. I just saw that highlighted. And then I see it'll be evaluated later.
Right, we usually do that at the planning stage.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area, and there's be sidewalks to nowhere.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we'll evaluate that.
Yep, okay, very good. Counsel, any questions from Ms. Atkinson?
Bye. The perimeter fencing, is that a solid fencing, or are they able to keep the fencing that they have?
So, they do want to keep the fencing that they have, and we're, so it could be fencing or screening. So we're working with them on evergreens landscape screening.
With the sprinkler system.
We'll have to evaluate that.
Got to keep them alive.
Yes, I know, especially with the, we've had the past week.
Counsel, anything else? Okay, then this item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so, or raise your hand on the platform.
Alan, I just a quick question. Is, are they planning on these one hundred and twenty three lots? Or are they actually going to put mobile homes on there and rent the mobile homes out?
Alan, could you repeat the question?
Are they just making the one hundred and twenty three lots, and there's empty lots, and people will bring their own mobile home and put them on there and buy the lot? Or are they going to bring in mobile homes and rent the mobile homes? I mean, both, sir.
My name is Dale Nordham. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm, to answer a gentleman's question, both, right? And honestly, we actually prefer that people bring in their own. It's just better plan, you know, but we we will do both, you know, we don't want them scattered, especially around the edges till everything fills up, because it'll take a little bit of time, not too much. We're pretty well backed, and we'll, you know, we want to get them get them looking nice, looking good, and everything is, they were trying to do is kind of an improvement, if you notice, on most of the things that we tried to, we tried to go a little bit above and beyond on what the requirements were, you know.
So the, I see the stipulation of nothing can be moved in that's older than fifteen years.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And then, but then I guess once they're there, I don't know what the, what the lifetime of a mobile home is.
Well, I got, I'll tell you, I got one in Harker Heights right now. It's a nineteen eighty. It's, it's, it could have a couple of years left if we put enough money into it, but we have some, and I couldn't tell you exactly, but I know I have some from the seventies, you know, and it's just on maintenance, just on anything, you know.
Yeah, just like any old home.
Old car, take it, it'll last.
So, so fifteen years old, when it, it could easily last, expected to last another twenty or twenty five year.
At least.
With with good maintenance.
The fifteen year, I think, is to bring in.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay, and we kind, we have an internal, because we have several communities from here to Michigan. Our kind of internal unwritten policy is ten years. We like it. We don't like them older than ten, bringing in new ones to the community. We'll look at it. Again, if it's well maintained and it's twelve years old, we'd love to have it, you know, but but, you know, we don't want a twelve year old junker pulling in, you know, we're not going to do that, just get that lot full.
Yeah, we don't either.
Yeah, I understand.
Is there someone on site?
Yes, yes, I do have staff of three right now. And honestly, and I'd probably anticipate at least, at least probably two more with the, with the expansion, additional management and probably maintenance staff. That's just on, that's just the staff that we have, not counting our contractors and vendors that we use.
With your history, how, how difficult is it once a home is moved in for it to move out?
To move out? I bet we can, we can actually do it in a few hours, you know, and and there's companies, the movers, they'll come in, they'll tear up the skirting, and we've sat a lot, sat alongside Bell County Constables when when things didn't go right, and where they do have to get moved down, or when people move them out, if the setters know what they're doing, they can do it in under two hours, lot cleaned up, no problem, you know.
As long as it actually takes movement out, or once, once you have a dilapidated, or a home that's older. Yeah, and that would, so I guess that's a question of mine, is what, if you have an older home that you've determined that it's no longer meets your requirements, that's someone's home, and they own that piece of property. What does it take then for, for, what sort of policy is around moving that older home out?
Well, they, they have to follow the, oh, on just moving it out or getting to that point to where we have to move it out.
To that point where you, it, it, it no longer is suitable to be there.
Okay, generally, before that would happen, there'd be, you know, some kind of notices, hey, the skirting is not compliant. And again, that goes to our community rules and regulations, and then the city also has all of those in place, too. So we give them a lot of warning. We try to assist, and we usually have other homes available if it were to, you know, to get to the point to where we'd have to take legal action, if I understand the question correctly. You know, you're looking anywhere from, depending on the person living in it, you know, sixty to ninety days, but you can run into appeals and it can get prolonged, so generally, it's pretty fast, but every once in a while, there's, you know, there's, you can end up, you know, in a court system for a little longer than for.
Hey, very good. Counsel, anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience or on the platform? Nope. Very good. Then at this time, council, I will close the public hearing on item number twelve and entertain a motion.
I move to approve item twelve with the collisions.
Second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Grant, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, cast your vote. Item twelve passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item thirteen is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the release of a right of way easement subject to a public utility easement, being the entirety of the public right of way of the road known as Corporate Way, from its terminus at the intersection of McLean Parkway to its terminus at the intersection of Research Parkway in the outer loop. Mr. Nuttall.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry for the long thing again, but what you've got to do when you're abandoning road right of ways is if you don't have meets and bounds, you have to have a clear description of what you're doing. And so in this case, we're looking to abandon the whole right of way. Again, Transportation Code, Chapter three eleven, provides the municipality with the authority over the streets. over streets and alleys generally. And, uh, section 3311007, under that chapter, states that a home rule municipality may vacate, abandon or close a street or alley. But it does require that a public hearing be held, which is why we're here today. So this will be the entire length of corporate way from McLean Parkway all the way up through old Howard Road. Uh, there are several utilities within the right of way. And so that's, they were requesting that we maintain a public utility easement over the area to be abandoned. And, uh, part of the reason to do this is, uh, that, uh, as you see on the map there, all the area, both north and south of the road is, uh, marked with the appraisal district ID number 126439. And it's currently owned by the city of Temple. Um, so by abandoning this, uh, this right of way, it opens up the ability to look for economic development opportunities and things like that. So the staff recommendation is to approve the abandonment of the entire length of corporate way subject to a public utility easement covering that abandoned right of way. And I am here if you are, have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counseling questions for Mr. Nuttall? Okay, if there being none, I'll, um, open the public hearing on item number 13.
Okay. City of Temple owns the property of Alan Lidle on the north and south, all around this road. So why are we abandoning the road? Why not just, it's on our property, why don't we just keep the road?
It's in connection to a project that TEDC is working on. So it will help them, um, to be able to market the entire location to a future economic development prospect.
But we sell them the road with the.
Right, that would make it no longer a public roadway. It could be a private roadway that could then be used by the, um, it, it, the business or corporation that may ultimately purchase that lot.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Brown, is there anyone on the platform? Okay. Then, um, counsel at this time, I'll, uh, close the public hearing on item 13 and entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item 13 as approved, as, um, presented by Mr. Nuttall.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Please cast your vote.
I vote I. Johnson.
You just voted on it?
I did.
Very good. Then, um, item 13 passes five votes to zero. Moving on to 14 is consider adopting a resolution approving a site plan in, in accordance with ordinance 2016 dash 4758 on lot one, block one, Waters Dairy Edition in the city of Temple, Belle County, Texas, addressed as 5015 South 31st. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, this is here before you tonight for the first reading and we'll return back on September 5th. So the background on this property, um, there is an existing, um, ordinance in place for this for a PD that was connected to a different site plan. Um, and so this is coming back since the site plan is changing to, um, have you approved this one for this new intended use? This is part of a subdivision replat, um, and a final plat for the MoFlo edition, which is recently recorded last month. This did go to DRC review for the site plan on July 22nd and no issues were identified. Um, so here's the proposed site plan. Um, it's basically just one building divided into two parts, uh, for two tenants. Um, they're proposing a space for a cafe and the other for a dry cleaning facility. Um, it's a single story building with a height, um, with the eve height of about 12 feet. And then the exterior finish, um, they've given us some elevations to look at. And it's going to have stucco and stone, um, some metal awnings and some architectural relief to the entrance of the buildings. And then also again, that three foot high, uh, course of stone around the base. Um, so looking at parking, they're proposing a maximum of 14 parking spaces. And based on our code, which is one space per 250 square feet of required, um, that's a minimum of 12. So they're meeting that. Then we also, um, we'll confirm that again when it comes in for building permit. So here are some of the, um, elevations and, uh, images that they provided. Uh, again, this is going to have the minimum of 5% of the lot to be landscaped per 7.4 of the UDC. Um, and so we'll make sure that that's all in compliance when we review building plans. Here's a couple more images of schematics and elevations, and then we move on to public facilities. Uh, will be served by, uh, City of Temple Utilities. Waste water is available eight inch line on, uh, the western boundary of this plat. And then the water is available from eight inch on South 31st Street. And, um, there are existing sidewalks, but they are also going to provide a five foot internal sidewalk access their facility. Uh, we did have public notification, um, for, uh, no, this is the one that we changed. So this is the one that, um, we have notified in the past, but, um, it's been determined that notification is not required under our UDC provisions, um, for the review of a site plan. So, uh, the public hearing is still required and that's why we're here. So, um, that was posted again at that 72 hours ahead of the meeting. So staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. There's only two conditions on here and it's very minor. It's basically asking them to add a few things, uh, to the site plan, making sure that it's, has all the dimensional standards, uh, called out. Um, and then also a note, um, that it is going to be compliant with the conditions, uh, per ordinance 2016 4750. Um, and again, that includes some of those architectural features, um, our performance standards for the lighting, um, our signage, um, on the facades and more elimination and light trespass restrictions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, anything for Ms. Atkinson?
No, just a statement. I'm excited about this. I think this is, this is going to be a wonderful development.
Yep. Great service to the community in that area.
Kelly, I might've missed it, but I, did you say on your first slide that this is going to come back on September 5th? I think this is just a single reading in my.
Oh, is it?
I think the site plan just takes a single reading, so. Just so you guys know, this is one and done.
Oh, man, never mind. Okay, we will fix that.
And Ms. Davis, does it require public hearing?
This, this changed from the first time it went through with the previous site.
Yeah, I don't think it did because it's kind of a development based on what the PD said, and I don't believe the PD had public hearing. Yeah, it's not a zoning case.
My apologies for that mistake on there.
You do. Okay. Alan's chomping a bit, but, but Alan. No, 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 you can't, you can't. We can't, we can't say there's not a public hearing and you say, but I don't sound a public hearing, but all I really want to say. That's right. Very good. So this item is not subject to a public hearing, sorry, Alan. And, um, so counsel, I will entertain a motion on item 14.
Kelly, please thank the, um, applicants for including some architectural leaf with the awnings and things like that. So it's not just a square block.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Flores. Uh, Mr. Flores is online, so he is listening in.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. Then counsel, um, I'll entertain a motion on item number 14.
I'll make a motion to approve item 14 as presented by Ms. Atkinson.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item 14 passes five votes to zero. Item 15 is consider adopting a resolution authorizing an appeal of standards from Unified Development Code, section 6.7.7.1 or I, I'm not sure which that is. I think that's, that's a one to allow an exception to the sign height, the maximum in the I-35 industrial sub-district overlay from 35 feet to 75 feet in height and to the sign size maximum of 200 square feet to 300 square feet for property addressed as 5501 North General Bruce Drive. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this one is this in? Oh no, here we are. Okay, so we are at the August 15th. I'm sorry, that last one just threw me off. So here you can see our vicinity map, so, um, we are on I-35 Service Road. Um, so this property is located in the industrial sub-district of the I-35 corridor, which has, um, certain sign standards attached to that. So the zoning around this area, um, we have commercial light industrial and some ag. Um, here you can see in the UDC code requirements for the pylon sign, it's considered a freestanding sign, which is, has a support structure, um, that's either concealed and enclosed. And, um, we also have decorative masonry material. So the max height is the 25 feet to 35 feet, uh, 25 feet or 35 feet. And then the max area is the 200 square feet for the actual sign face. So this appeal is to, um, our code to allow for 75 feet in height and 300 square feet for the sign face. Um, so this applicant did provide a couple of different options when they turned in this request. So their max request is that 75 feet, um, with the 300 uh, square foot face. And then they also provided a second option, which is 35, I'm sorry, 50 feet with a 247 square feet for that sign face. So this is for an Atwood sign and here you can see a site plan showing the building and the parking out front and then the highway, uh, frontage down there on the bottom of your screen. Um, and then the picture on the, on the right is zoomed in a little bit. So you can just see that location of where they're proposing, um, having that sign out close to the frontage. So here's the couple of options just to show the difference in the height, um, and what that might look like. So here's just a couple photos. So looking at, um, the surrounding, you can see it's undeveloped, um, all around this area, except for this one development. And some additional site photos, um, to the west, looking at some commercial uses, the north, again, commercial uses. Um, the east has the undeveloped and ag land. And then also to the south, more commercial, um, we have a little bit of a planned development and some light industrial that direction as well. Just showing a distance into, you know, some of the development that we do have along I-35 where we have maybe some more clusters of signs and signs that might be a little bit higher than normal um, to the code, um, due to various reasons. And then Atwoods, um, further to the north. And we've put Buc-E's on there because that's probably the most recent appeal that we've had come through. And that was for, um, a monument sign and we can talk a little bit more about that. Um, so looking at some sign comparisons, you can see, um, just some along the loop. And then you can see other areas, uh, where they didn't have the sign regulations and they're, you know, large and bulky and, and taking up a lot of space. Um, so looking at a comparison on our sign standards, just to other communities, um, we're pretty much in line with other communities on, uh, our square footage and our height. We just, we did see that, um, Belton does have a max height that goes up to 75 feet. But they also have, uh, less square footage for their, um, sign area. And so on this appeal, the staff recommended disapproval for both of the requests. There's, you know, an opportunity for us to really stick within our code here, since it is within an overlay. Really just making sure that we're looking at quality of signage and making sure that we're not overdoing our signage um, in this, you know, really traveled area. Uh, and then also it's not surrounded currently, um, by other businesses. And then, um, I, I did want to touch base real quick on the Buc-E's car wash sign appeal, which is that 24 dash one case. Um, so that, they, they could have also brought a, a pylon sign for that, but they actually requested a monument sign, which is more in line with what we're trying to do with our visuals along that corridor. So that is why staff was able to work with them and look and see that maybe the monument, measurements didn't really meet up to what would be needed for a monument sign that would, um, be visible enough. And so we were more flexible on that appeal request and not so much on pylon requests. Um, so we are reviewing sign requirements as part of our UDC update. Um, and so that's a whole section all on its own. So that's a lot of fun to dig into, but we are reviewing that, um, actually coming up pretty soon. And again, the request by the applicant does not, um, align currently with the I-35 overlay standards. And I have additional information in the back of this, if y'all have some questions on either the previous appeal case or some more photos of the area, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did, um, I didn't see the, I didn't see it labeled on your presentation, but how tall is the, or do you know how tall the, um, the main pylon sign at Buc-E's is? The one that just has the.
Yeah, their overall pylon height, I think was right at 100 feet. Um, but that was part of a different agreement that they.
No, I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a comparison.
Yeah.
That was 100 feet, but, but they're looking at 247?
Uh, no, that would be the square footage of the sign face. This request would go up to seven, their highest, um, height request is 75 feet. And then they also proposed a 50 foot option.
And the, the current Buc-E's, the, the big main, it's like a lollipop. Um, that one is 100 feet?
I believe so is. Was it 100? Okay, yes.
Any idea what the square footage on that is?
Oh, man, you know what? That might be one of our. There we go. 490. It's a very, very large sign.
It is.
They have a unique business model and sure, that was part of those considerations.
And Mayor and counsel, this is one of the things that, you know, we're, we're going to need to tackle as we narrow into our unified development code updates. But, um, you know, I think from a staff perspective, if, um, if there's not a desire to kind of stay with the standard that's in the I-35 code, then we probably just need to change it versus continuing to, um, approve on a case by case basis. So, you know, I think that so, some, some of the individual appeals have had some extenuating circumstances. You know, they've been next to larger signs or had some topography issues. But, you know, this is kind of an, an as yet undeveloped area. And so, you know, and, and again, I mean, it, it, either way is fine. But if, if we are gonna, if this is gonna kind of be this, the standard that we, that we hold to, we probably should just talk about changing that within the code versus having these come through. You know, and putting the applicant through it and the, the staff through the time and energy of, um, if, you know, ultimately we're just gonna get there anyway. So, um, that's definitely something we need to spend some more time on in the future.
10 years ago, I really would like us to get wherever it is we're going with a plan rather than just piecemeal.
Right.
Basically saying, um, in addition to that, um, this is sort of not quite, but very close to the interest of the high school in the sense of that's the high school area that developing in and around the high school. Not exactly, but, but sort of. And, um, I hate to see us going higher without a plan at that area.
I see.
Isn't this, this one particularly is beyond Buc-E's, north of Buc-E's.
Oh. It's at Nugent, it's at Nugent.
No, no, it's, it's north. Yeah, it's, it's.
Forget everything I just.
You were confusing me for a second. It's it's just north of the, um, Baylor Scott and White's Distribution Center, which I do think has a monument style sign as well, if I'm remembering correctly.
I clearly did not drive over there and look at it because when I read it, I, somewhere I got Nugent, forget everything.
Sorry. Yeah, it's, 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 you know, near the northern boundary of our city limits.
Your overlay does cover the area in front of the high school though. That makes you feel better. Your overlay does cover the area in front of the high school, though. That makes you feel better.
Your comments are still valid, just not necessarily for this particular request.
Yes.
So right now, the option, um, because they, they did present an alternate plan.
Correct.
But it's not, it's not listed here.
Um, so we just listed the maximum that they had requested, um, but you could always.
Prove whatever.
Mm-hmm.
That I can remember, and I know I've been a part of voting yes on several, on busting our ordinance here, our overlay. Um, all of them have had some kind of extenuating circumstances, even Buc-E's is up on a hill over the, with the bridges all in the way and everything. This is pretty good. I mean, I drove by the other day, you know, there's Atwood's, it's very plainly, it's very easily seen. So.
If I missed where it was, there, there aren't extenuating circumstances.
It's, it's pretty flat there and pretty easy to see, I think.
In some ways, you'll be going actually downhill toward it.
That's not to say that we may not need to look at the, at our overlay, because we keep getting these requests, but all of them, all of them for at least the last few years that I recall have had some extenuating circumstances there.
Staff also has had some very preliminary conversations around, you know, our other overlay and zoning doesn't have this type of appeal process. We have a variance process where if there's a hardship or something, you know, so maybe we need to just be more in alignment with, more consistent with how we, how we treat other, um, needs for, for variances or, or, um, not variances in the sense of the legal word variance, but changes or, or variations from our code. Um, so we, we, we are certainly beginning to look at that, and we'll bring that to y'all's attention, but ob- obviously, this case is before you tonight. But I just did want to mention that that's something, um, you know, I know we are, many of you have mentioned, um, to me, your desire to look at, you know, other, um, major corridors and not seeing, um, kind of us lose control of um, those, um, with just super tall signs everywhere. So we are looking at that, that is something that is on, um, very high priority in our list for the, uh, Unified Development Code because of, um, the direction that, that y'all have given. Um, you know, and this case is just before kind of where, where, um, here with any comprehensive recommendations for you.
Very good. Any more discussion?
The staff is recommending disapproval?
Yes.
Or dis- denial.
Which would let them obviously still construct a sign that it would be capped at thirty-five feet instead of the fifty or seventy-five that they're requesting. So, you know, you could approve up to seventy-five feet or anywhere in between thirty-five or seventy-five, or just say, you know, we need to stick to the standard, which is thirty-five, so those are your options tonight.
Atkinson, do you, do you recall or have information on the, the last few that we've given the variances to, how tall they were? I know, I remember Sparta Crane.
Yeah.
But that was, that was kind of behind a hill.
Yeah, sixteen.
Yeah.
Lost by.
Sounds about right.
Roadhouse. Yeah.
And, uh, the other one we had recently for QT, I want to say they only went to about forty-five or fifty.
Are you speaking of Sparta Crane?
No, no, I'm speaking, we had, uh, QT come along the I thirty-five corridor as well, and I believe it was around forty-five or fifty.
Most of the more recent ones, e- even, even I would say dating five years back have not gone up to the full seventy-five. I say full, they, even when you have approved a variance, it hasn't been quite, quite at seventy-five feet. Um, and again, usually there's some topography or, um, um, lots of signs in the area or, you know, some other issue that you've, um, considered as part of that.
Yeah, it was very good. What's that of that QT sign?
And again, as Bren said, um, we're usually evaluating, um, elevations and other, you know, so, site-specific conditions and and, uh, trying to determine, you know, where they might need some leeway.
QT's kind of below a bridge. And Sparta was up, up on a kind of hard to see.
Counsel, any further discussion? Any more questions for Ms. Atkinson? Very good. Then, um, counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item number fifteen.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on item fifteen to support the staff's suggestion of, um, denying this request. Am I phrasing that correctly? Yes. The staff's, uh, suggestion of, of, uh, denying the appeal.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a, um, second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. The vote to deny the appeal passes five votes to zero. It's currently six twenty. Thank you all for attending.